Thank you.
Be seated, please.
Item number four is ceremonial matters, proclamations and employee recognition.
Okay, Mayor Council, I would like to start by introducing our newest employee, our S T R specialist, and I might call on Shelby to make the formal introduction. Shelby?
Good morning, Council. I am pleased to inform you that we have hired Ms. Jan Musgrove as our S T R specialist. We are so pleased to have her onboard. She has a wealth of knowledge in managing short-term rental properties. And with that, Ms. Jan Musgrove.
Good morning, everybody. I'm super excited to join you all and try and tackle this task. So bear with me, have patience, and we'll get it done.
Welcome. Thank you. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Okay, Shelley Goodwin, could you come up? Shelley? Wanted to make the council aware that Shelley was recently noticed by the president of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, Amanda Campos, and given an award for one of three President's Choice Awards given at an annual awards banquet in October in Georgetown. This award is in appreciation of outstanding service in 2022 to the organization and to her fellow municipal clerks statewide. So Shelley, congratulations and thank you for all of your great work. Okay, next I have three police officers, and I'm pretty sure we've called a few of these names before. So if I could have Eric Kinterlock, Luke Smith, and Denise Munoz join me upfront. So this email comes from a James Donahue to our police chief. He writes, "On Friday, November 4th, 2022, I was involved in a traffic accident on Main Street in Fredericksburg. An out-of-control driver trying to get somewhere fast by speeding down Main Street was weaving through traffic on a busy Friday afternoon. With many pedestrians walking down a crowded sidewalk, he rear-ended my car. The impact was so significant that it pushed me through the intersection at Main and Lincoln. My vehicle was then not drivable and had to be towed away. Your officers were immediately on scene and provided me with medical aid, and the accident report was taken by Officer Hinterlock, number 179. Please pass on my sincere thanks to Officer Hinterlock and others and the first responders who showed their concern for my safety that day. Sincerely, James Donahue." Again, Eric Kinterlock, Luke Smith, and Denise Munoz. Okay, this next one is a pretty big one. If I could have Chief Invisl join me upfront. This email comes from a Joe Martello, captain of the Melissa Fire Department. This is regarding a motor vehicle accident in Fredericksburg back in May of this year. Mr. Martello writes, "On May 18th, 2022, my son and his wife were vacationing in an Airbnb in your area. This vacation was also a celebration of their one-year anniversary of my daughter-in-law's successful completion of her nursing school and my son's newly awarded position with Plano Fire Rescue. On this day, they were driving into town for breakfast and were involved in a major accident on Highway 16. My daughter-in-law suffered a broken right humerus, along with may buns and scrapes, and sustained the vehicle sustained major damage. My son called and informed me of the accident, and though I was on shift with Melissa Fire Department at the time, my chief Carl Nix released me of my shift duties, and I immediately headed to be by my family's side. My son was able to inform me along the way of the details of the wreck and the location at Hill Country Memorial Hospital. While on scene, my son stated that B-shift crew, which responded to the accident, gave top-level care and took care of my family."
Oh, would we have three calls for?
Okay, three calls going on right now. So duty calls. "After my son and daughter-in-law arrived at the hospital, Chief Bizzle came by the room and checked on them to see if they needed anything. He asked if they needed lunch or ride home, a place to stay in the interim. They were my family away from home, and they treated us with great care. We are a big family. I believe this is a big family statewide, nationwide, and even worldwide in the fire department profession. Mr. Bailey, you and your citizens of your community should be proud of those who serve in the fire department. They treated my family as if they were arrow. I cannot thank Chief Bizzle and the crew enough." So thank you, Chief, and the big crew that responded to this accident.
I have the calling for the crews that were there that day, and I also want to recognize our volunteer department. When we empty the station as it is right now, we have all of our crews out right now, and then we call in the volunteers and part-time people to staff the station. And in this case, and I know Luke Smith was just currently recognized, but he's also a volunteer firefighter. Those that were at the station to respond to another call, we got one that day, was Paul Hunterman, Romney Court, Aaron Coleman, and Luke Smith. So I want to thank them for what they do as well. Thank you very much.
Going to have to get the mayor to take over these semi-emotional recognitions. All right. And I just wanted to quickly mention, and I'll formally recognize this group later, but I wanted to recognize six of our employees that recently graduated from a leadership program through the Texas Tech University Highland Lakes campus. Those employees are Anna Hudson, David Kellum, in our finance department. We have Chief Borhour, Derek Seelig, Braxton Raymer, and Chad Love Lady. So I'll do a formal recognition at the next council meeting, but that was just this past Friday. I wanted to mention that to the council at this point. Provide a lot more detail next time. Thank you. Did you want to say anything about the handouts upfront?
Sure, just a quick plug for the comp plan. We have the community survey up now. We have a webpage dedicated to the comp plan, and our consultants have created a survey through Survey Monkey. So you can just take a picture of the QR code and it'll take you directly there. Or you can go to the city's webpage and search for Comp Plan 2023, and the entire webpage will come up. You can sign up to stay on the email list, submit a comment, and also get the link for the survey. This will be up through the holidays. It's got plenty of time. It is a little long, so set aside a few minutes to get good answers.
All right, thank you for that. Council comments. What are you hoping up to? Anybody?
Two, three things. Okay. One, the last town hall meeting that we had in Area 14, I'm excited to hear the report from that. It was a very wonderful, wonderful atmosphere in getting to visit with everyone. Second thing, the county met yesterday, and they are moving forward with subdivision and manufactured home rental community regulations. They're going to be voting on those at December 19th, Commissioner's Board meeting. And then the last thing, if y'all are noticing, in our agenda packet, there is a new blank on the memo for community vision or strategic initiatives. And I love that we're pointing back to why, the why behind what we're discussing, whether it's quality of life, family life, government. That's a good marker to write about.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. All right, we go to consent. Item number six. Counsel, there's several things here, obviously, as you see. Since they are in consent, we could act upon them in a single motion, or if you want to separate any or all, to pull out and have more detail or to discuss in more detail at this point. Anybody? We've got, let me just go through them. Six A is to consider the approval of the council member minutes for November 1st. That's the last meeting. And then the paragraph B, several purchases that are all approved from the budget. And item C is the Health Board Cooperative Agreement. And D, of course, you see that the appointments of Amy Montgomery and Holly Reno to a one-year term on the County Health Board, reappointing Juan De Detmer and Kathy Lindick for two-year terms, and Brett Boyer for a three-year term, and a couple of reappointments to the Gillespie County Economic Development Commission, Julie Culkin and Stephen Harris. So what's your pleasure, counsel? Anybody want to pull any of those and get any further detail?
I move that we approve all the items in the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve all of these items in the consent agenda. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And thank you for the detail in the packet that's there to help. And thank you to those people who agree to volunteer on these boards. It's very, very important that people in the community do that. So thank you. All right, item number seven. I did not get any written comments, Shelley. Is that correct? I'm talking about, I'm not talking about public. I'm talking about written. Okay. All right, so today we're going to discuss a few things. What is 7A, the action related to the Texas Water Board infrastructure funding for the North Lano Storm Sewer Project? Should I go first, Mr. Paul?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So a little bit of history on this application. In March of 2020, the Texas Water Development Board put out a call for qualifying drainage projects through the state's new flood infrastructure fund. In response, the city submitted two qualifying application packages for projects that both ranked in the top 10 of our 2016 Drainage Master Plan. One of the projects was the North Lano Storm Sewer Project, which is intended to address a longstanding drainage issue on the north side of town. The project would involve the installation of storm sewer inlets near the intersection of North Lano and College, where it's overtopped by storm water even during smaller storm events. That water would be captured in a storm sewer main and conveyed down North Lano to outfall into Town Creek at the bridge. That overall project has a cost of $2.6 million. And you may recall, in the fiscal year 2023 approved budget, there is $350,000 in design funding to start the design of that particular project. So going back, in March of this year, Texas Water Development Board passed a resolution officially awarding funding for the project to the city in the amounts of grant funding, which equates to 15%. It's $390,529. And then the remaining $2.212 million is eligible for a 0% interest loan through the flood infrastructure fund. I did want to note, the term of that loan could be up to 30 years. So since that time, city staff and our bond counsel and financial advisors have been coordinating with Texas Water Development Board on the required documentation for funding of the project. Dan Wegemiller with Specialized Public Finance is here today, as well as Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. They can talk about the specifics of the documentation and hopefully answer any questions you might have. But as far as action goes this morning, there's two documents. We've got a resolution relating to the grant portion of the funding. And then we also have a drainage revenue bond that requires an ordinance for the $2.212 million amount. So with that, Dan or Stephanie, do y'all have anything to add?
Thanks, Kara. Dan Wegemiller with Specialized Public Finance. Mayor, Council, it's pretty straightforward. We're selling bonds basically to the Water Development Board to fund this. The interest rate is 0%, so pretty hard to beat 0%. It's $2,212,000. It's going out 25 years is the way this has been structured. And basically, it's the only, there's a lot of different loan programs at the Water Board. This is the only one that is 0%. So it's a hard one to pass up if you qualify for it. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. And Stephanie is here. If you have any questions on the ordinance. Anyone?
So the interest that we pay goes to the Park Quality Board?
All you're repaying is the principal amount of $2,212 back over the next 25 years. There's literally zero interest paid on this loan.
And do we pay a certain amount every year?
Yes, ma'am. You pay, it's scheduled out roughly around $90,000 a year over 25 years to pay the loan back.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And I did want to note, this is funded entirely out of the Drainage Enterprise Fund. So this is what our stormwater fees go towards.
Is there any difference in what we approved in the budget? It's still under the amount, right?
Yes, that's just to get us going. So we'd like to start design as soon as possible. The intent is to hopefully have this project completed by the end of the year or early next year.
Thank you, Dad. Clinton, anything to add?
No, sir. Nothing to add. Thank you.
Let's move this. If it's your will.
I move we approve resolution, resolution 2022-24R.
A second.
Motion second to approve the resolution, approving a grant agreement, the amount of $390,000, et cetera. Do we need to take two and three separately, Mr. Attorney?
Yes. And if you look on Agenda Page, Agenda Packet, page 118, there's a distinct motion for the ordinance.
Is the actual wording? That's okay.
The motion for the resolution was fine, but for the ordinance, there's a distinct distinction.
Okay. Thank you.
Did the motion fill the requirements, or does it need to be withdrawn or restated?
He said that was okay. It's wording for the ordinance. It's.
All right. All right, so that motion to adopt the authorization of the city of Fredericksburg Utility System Drainage Revenue Bonds Series 2022. Any further discussion?
The motion was for item 7A2, the resolution. That was the motion that was just made.
Right.
Just to approve the resolution.
Right. Oh, am I on the wrong page?
You just misread.
You said 118, it's probably 115. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
And I move.
Any opposed, by the way? Okay. I think I hear everybody's voice, but I should ask. Sorry.
I move we adopt the ordinance authorizing the city of Fredericksburg, Texas Utility System Drainage Revenue Bonds Series 2022.
Motion second to adopt the ordinance authorizing those revenue bonds Series 2022. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel, for helping us out here. Follow the right verbiage for all the legal requirements. Thank you, Garrett, for working through all that. It's part of your job, but that's a big deal. Thanks. Oh, pretty good. All right, 7B, consider approving the following acquisitions of lease purchase financing of public equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith. Presentation, Ms. Holliday.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Today's agenda is just, we've already approved in the 2023 budget for the acquisition. First item is the fire investment radio equipment approved here in the budget, and it was approved to be lease purchase financing for this purchase. And we went out with a bid, and it's October 18th, 2022, council approved that award bid to bank funding on behalf of Cojet Bank. And so today's agenda is to approve the resolution and contract for those purchases for funding. It's now part of the plan to approve the origin of lease purchase financing of the fire investment system.
Okay, so counsel, you see in your packet, page 170, following the memo about this, we passed the, we adopted approved funding for it, financed over five years, et cetera.
That's a million, one twenty-four, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I move that we approve resolution 2022-22R, fire EMS radio system equipment.
A second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do we know if the county's?
Can you speak to that, Daniel? If you can't, that's fine, but.
I mean, I don't have any updates since we last spoke about it.
Okay. We can give that information to the council. I'm not positive what action they take.
I'm just wondering.
The question was, do you know if they've addressed it?
I think maybe Chief Bizzle had communicated with, I don't know if he's still here.
I think Chief may have talked to Doug Strayer about that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, I have visited with the judge recording this project, and they have the funding available and are going to pay for half of the project. How that financing works, I guess will be up to our finance department. But they have agreed to and will be funding half of the project.
Thank you.
All right, we're now to Section 8, other item actions.
We've got one. I'm moved to approve resolution 2022-23R with the purchases for various divisions within Public Works and Fire EMS.
Okay.
So this is the resolution specific to the equipment purchases for various divisions for Public Works. Emily, second. All right, we have motion second on the motion. Any further discussion?
These are all things that were approved in the budget, right?
That's correct.
We're running through them kind of quick. I didn't want.
Yes, ma'am.
People think we weren't paying serious attention to them, because we paid very serious attention to all of this during the budget process.
Thanks, ma'am. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, Section 8, other action items and updates. A, consider discuss and take possible action on the employee holiday schedule for 2023. B, to consider approval to award a bid to Tuscan Pavers for Mark Fox. And C, consider discuss and take possible action on soccer fields. And then there was a, and then added one. Let me see if I can find it in my pad here. There you go. Consider discuss and take possible action to initiate text amendments to Section 2.100 of the city zoning ordinance. And then that prompted an additional item in executive session. Receive and discuss legal advice concerning applicable Texas and federal case law related to municipal regulation of short-term rentals. So back to A to A, consider discuss and take possible action on 2023 employee holiday schedule. Shelley?
So every year, the city council is required to approve the next year's holiday schedule, and that's what this is. There are 13 days that we have provided for you that we're requesting approval.
Were any added this year?
The only one added to next year proposed is Presidents' Day. That will be one additional day.
What is it?
Presidents' Day. Presidents' Day, which is February 20th, 2023, Monday.
That's a federal one.
Yes. I shouldn't.
It's a school holiday.
Your Presidents' Day parties are legend. Anybody have any other questions or discussion about the site?
I move to approve the 2023 city employee holiday calendar.
Second.
Motion second to approve this calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consider approval to award a bid to Tuscaney Pavers for $7.25 a square foot not to exceed $250,000 for replacement of pavers at Mark Fox and Schmidt.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is just the completion of the paper project out at Market Square. Some money was budgeted and approved this year. I will want to make a correction that it's $200,000. Last year it was $250,000. So the budget this year is $200,000. We only had one company come to the pre-bid meeting, and only one company submit, and that was Tuscaney Pavers. They're the same company that did the project last year. So the plan is to, if it's approved, let them know today so they can put in an order for the pavers. They'll be here in about six weeks, so they can get started, hopefully about three weeks earlier than last year. The goal is to have it completed before spring break, if the weather and everything else cooperates. So we'd like to open this up for questions, if you have any.
Counsel, just to note, the funding is tourism fund.
Was the $7,250 we're removing the papers included in the budget going to be approved?
Yes, this was all included. That was just for 1,000 square feet. So we're going to do $7.25 per square feet. I think we have about 23,000 to 25,000 square left. So we have $200,000 in the budget.
Andrew, you may have said, how old are these pavers now?
I don't know exactly, but, okay. We've had a lot of damage from, they were clay pavers, so the water gets in them every winter. When it freezes, it's caused them to crack. The winter storm here a couple of years ago really sped it up and a lot of trip hazards. So we're hoping to get that all corrected, so we don't have to worry about it anymore.
And this is a different material, but it looks like the clay that we have, so it still maintains its attractive appeal, but will last longer perhaps?
Yes, concrete pavers are what we're replacing the clay ones.
I move to approve the bid to Tuscaney Pavers for $7.25 per square foot not to exceed $200,000 for the replacement of pavers at Mark Fox.
Second.
Motion second to approve this award.
Says not to exceed 250,000 in our region, which is a mistake. Okay, sorry.
Do we need clarification of the motion?
No.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Item 8C, consider discuss and take possible action. This will be first, we need to do an executive session on the site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So let's do that and then come back on that one.
Is there a presentation before we go?
Okay, we'll come back with the presentation after executive session, very short executive session. Any motion?
I move we go out of regular into executive session.
Section 8. Motion second to go out of regular into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 If you can keep your seats, we're going to read.
We're just going to do this one item, so we'll hear other. And Kim, I will, you will have your comment right as we get back. I have you down.
Functions the government gives to do. Speaking of quality of life, I think trash, sewer, roads, electricity, water. That helps my quality of life. Losing my home is not. So I encourage you, I also want to say very quickly, our lady in Guadalupe, I was so impressed with for several years, they had tamale dinners to, to build their whole hall. It took a little while, they did it little by little, they did it. I think of the skate park, I think of the basketball pavilion, I think of HEB Park, which has a soccer field there too. I think of the splash pad, I think of the tennis courts that HEB helped fund, okay? So I would propose that if people want soccer, keep working on the fundraising. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Here's what I think I know about this being on the agenda, and, and y'all can input if you, if I have something wrong. I frequently do. It's on the agenda because, and I, I kind of don't remember the details of the, of the bond issues. Those are, what, has it been five or so years ago? Has it been that long ago? Something like, okay, and I had to delete files and fill them with something else. But this is on the agenda because, am I correct? The Soccer Association has approached with a proposal for co-funding in your, in your massive fundraising efforts over a million order bids, and talked to the city and also will in, talk to the county about a combined public-private stratagem to provide these soccer fields on property that we own. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. So, so from a bond issue, Jeanette, just, I'm just clarifying, from my head, from a bond issue, it goes to, all right, yes, the voters voted that down twice, whatever the provisions of the bond issue were. But this is a new, a new thing. It's a co-funded issue with the Soccer Association, which has a big stake in this, lots of kids, and the city property and county to participate in. And, and it is a quality of life issue, but I mean, that's just the way we look at it. So I, I'm just responding to what you were saying, because it's not another try at a bond issue. Yeah. Can you make it short? Because you've got, you signed up for another spot here on another issue. Keep it very brief, please.
Yes. It's still taxpayer money. The other thing is that, yes, it's divided between different people, but for me, I'm going to have to be paying the county side and the city side. The third thing is, once you put something in place, there's always maintenance, upkeep, all that stuff, so it's ongoing expense. Also, I think there's a problem with the fact that the city owns the property, but the county is asked to build the building. And I think they had an issue before with the, the fire thing too on that. But again, I'm saying that these sorts of things should be funded by the people. There's people that will help corporations, different things, and I, I commend them on what they've done so far. And I just say, keep going, because the people don't want their tax money going towards this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything further on this issue, council?
Okay. If, if you would like to hear about the, the plans for improvements, we can move forward with that. Or if you would like to wait, we're probably going to get this back on a future agenda.
So there's no action.
I'm sorry.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Kemp? I'm happy to have you doing, making a presentation live at this time. If you feel like we're moving in, you know, there's more direction to move in on this. Go ahead, tell us. We've had others speak on it, so you speak on it.
So thank you, Dan Kemp, president of the Soccer Association, the National Country United Program. Mark Cornet, and I've, when, yes, we had two failed bonds. I think the biggest part of the failed bond was the ongoing maintenance stuff that was going to happen the second time, which I agree was very expensive. With this new plan, the association takes on all the maintenance. Take care of the mowing, fertilizing, all that stuff. We're going to raise a million, I think it's a million 23,000, I think it's in front of me, but I kind of know it by memory. A million 23,000 R in, asking the city to contribute their side of it, which is the water infrastructure, get that done. And then we will go to the county and have discussions. We've had discussions with the county in the past. So things changed with the city, so we halted our fundraising efforts. We've already raised, we have $250,000 worth of pledges. We feel like we can raise another $800,000. We've had a lot of private conversations, a lot of other things going where we think that $800,000 is going to come fairly quickly. But we need, we got to have, that first almano's got to fall, so we can go ask for it. I think this is the best way to do it. It's a private-public partnership to get it done. This is probably what's going to have to happen for a lot of the other things that are coming. Yeah, private sector's going to have to step up and contribute. So we have 700 kids playing soccer. It's probably the most growingest sport there is out there. It's going to continue to grow. I think it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg when we're trying to attract families to come to town, or trying to get them to have younger families come here, when they come to look at our dirt fields with rocks. It, it's, it's not great. It's far from that. This year's probably the worst it's ever been. It's just, it's a dust cloud, and now when it rains, it's just a mud field. So it, there's a lot of issues. I know on the, the club side of things, there's, there's recreational soccer, which is the most of the, most of the kids. There's five, four 75 or 500 kids this year. They're wanting to do a spring season, so we're talking about getting that going for the spring. That would attract some more. On the club side of things, we travel all over Texas competing. My team, that's getting ready, they're getting ready to go into high school. They will be varsity players. That is continuing to build for the high school system. It's just ongoing, keeps growing, growing, growing. So we're going to see great things in the future, but that's a bumper sticker.
That's a big bumper sticker.
Mark, did you want to speak?
No, I think, I think, and, and you might talk about schedule. So you always have to think, what's our end game? What is the end game? The end game for us is having the soccer world, it's really complete fields that are safe with hopefully grass growing. And when does that happen? And so if you really are a farmer, you understand that that needs to be planted in the spring. So all of those ground, all the things that have to happen back up. So as we've now cycled through this for a few years and look at things, we're, we're very quickly approaching that time. It's time, if it's going to happen in this calendar year. And so that, that's kind of, and we understand there's some other things in play, and we'll, we'll be kind of, but that's why we're here. It's, it's time. And, and if anybody, anybody witnessed soccer was over last weekend, direct side. I'm sure several of you've been out there before, but it, it's, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I could make one other clarification to a comment that Ms. Hermuth made regarding co-owned facilities, city, county. I, I don't think that's an obstacle we can't overcome. This building is co-owned by the city and the county. So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how that came up at, at some point when we were discussing the potential fire station construction. But I don't think that's a, an obstacle in the future.
Okay. Counsel, anything else on this issue? All right, thank you, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Ready to go to section nine? All right, city manager's report. Jeanette, you want to speak to this item, the town hall update, nine, seven nine A?
Yeah, again, I wanted to commend the council on this idea of town halls. I think it's a really good idea. Is it that you're having a couple a month, is that correct?
That's the plan.
Okay.
We'll have another one this month because Thanksgiving.
Okay. And, and how many neighborhoods did you break it up?
Twenty, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, so it'd take a while to get to all the neighborhoods.
So there, there may be a few areas that we're trying to combine, so we're trying to squeeze it all into a twelve month.
But it's still, yeah, so what I wanted to comment about is that you had commented that those were kind of helping to replace the public comments. And I want to say that I don't feel that this is a appropriate replacement for public comments. I think the town halls are very important, and I'm, I'm glad that you're having them. However, I really believe that the public comments should return, because often there's urgent concerns and different things that come up that should be discussed openly and publicly and on record, as this is, you know, and, and having to do with the city. That is not going to be possible in a town hall. It's not going to be possible like just sending a letter or an email, or sometimes there's just different things that there's a urgency or important concern that I think should be heard. And so I would propose that the, the, the city consider putting back on the agenda to discuss the possibility of putting, returning the public comments. They don't have to be just at the beginning. Usually there's just a one or two people or whatever, but I think it's a very important part of the civil discourse of informing and, you know, and love for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, Council, regarding the town hall update, this was the second of 27 town hall meetings. It was held last week. Our host was Christina Harmon. The location was 601 West Peachtree, it was right there at the corner of Peachtree Madison. We actually got to see a, a little bit of a speeding and traffic issue the entire time. We stood out there for about an hour and a half, about 28 people in attendance. I like to start the meeting with introductions, of course, talking about the, the purpose of the meeting series. It's not necessarily to replace public comment, but one of the things I like to do is ask for a raise of hands. One, who's been to a council meeting and who's been to coffee with the city manager? So I think this is a way to supplement that outreach and transparency. I've been really surprised at how many people have not been to a city council meeting at the vast majority. Most of them didn't know about coffee with the city manager, again, ways to engage. We had about 28 people. Again, I opened up, talking about the roughly 30 discussion topics that, that, that we've listed, comprehensive plan update. We talked a little bit about water supply, recent events, including Turner Hall, purchase of Turner Hall property, our relationship with Gillespie County moving forward and so forth. The mayor did attend this meeting. Emily came just a little bit late. There was a fun after five event that same night. Our health and services staff was involved, our consultant doing the common plan, so thank you for showing up late. It was a really neat setting. Sun was going down, there was a fire pit in the back, there were neighbors that were gathering. Just looking at the list, I think the oldest couple there has lived here since 1947. We had someone in attendance that had only been there for about five months. As we're going around, you can imagine some of the topics that were discussed. And this group was actually much different than the first group, much newer neighborhood on the north side of Maine. This is a much older neighborhood on the south side. But again, affordable housing, we talked about water and drought issues a little bit. Took the opportunity to update everyone on the projects we've recently completed. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail here in a minute. And water supply, not only reach, or for the city of Fredericksburg, but regionally and statewide. A lot of love for the neighborhood over there, very close-knit group, a lot of them know each other. It seems like there's generally a division between east and west there, two different groups, it seems. But a lot of positive comments about things we're doing right. From the bike patrol on Main Street to chipping leaves and brush and just offering this opportunity to come together. We talked a little bit about the city's response to the winter storm event a couple of years ago. For those that, that might not know, I did mention to the group that the Texas Engineering Extension Service used the city of Fredericksburg's response to that to develop a learning program that they're going to use statewide. So our response to that was top-notch when it comes to disaster recovery. I think we did a very good job of that. So again, traffic issues, we talked a little bit about short-term rentals, there were some owners there. Others, generally, and Mayor might add to this, generally people have very good luck with short-term rentals in that neighborhood. I really didn't hear of any specific complaints coming from the group. We did have a couple of follow-up items. As I mentioned, there, there were speeding traffic up and down the street right there. The next morning, we did put up a speed sign, just so people are aware of how fast they're traveling. We're looking at a four-way stop intersection potentially converting in that area. But from here, we will move forward, selecting another area. We might go a little bit further out of the way, going east to select an area. As people look at the map and see we've started on the west side of town, they're looking at the clock and thinking, gosh, it's going to be 11 months before they finally get to. So we're going to start selecting areas a little bit more randomly. Again, logging all of this information, those that attended, how long they've lived here, where they came from, the specific issues. We have follow-up items that we're addressing, some we can do a little more quickly than others. But again, what we're, what we're starting to see is people are, are really there to listen and, and, and get information from the city leaders that, that show up. Any questions about the, the town hall or the town hall coming up? Mayor, I mentioned we're not having the next one, that would fall on Thanksgiving Day. So the next one will be scheduled for the 13th of December. Again, we'll let you know what area we have in mind. But any questions on the town hall meeting? Very sorry you couldn't make it, Tony.
Let me just add one comment, you mentioned short-term rentals in this group. That's a, a area of town where, there, there are several, is that right? A few towns. And there were some comments from the neighbors there that said they don't have any issues and. There were some comments as well grieving over the loss of neighbors and the, the quality of, the quality of the neighborhood where people live, they know, and they can count on to get their mail and that sort of thing. They didn't have specific solutions, they just said, we really miss that. I just want to make some comments.
Lady that talked about when she was in the neighborhood and her mother was living with her, that she could still work because she knew her neighbors and they could take care of her mom. And when that situation changed, she had to make other arrangements, she no longer had neighbors. Right. Moving on to coffee with the city manager, again, another outreach opportunity. And this has really turned into an event where I think people are showing up looking for an update and information from the city. There were about 40 people that showed up to the latest coffee with the city manager. Councilwoman Joseph was there. We talked about a, a number of different items, giving updates on what the council just recently talked about, discussed during its, its council meeting, what was coming up on the, on the meeting today. We talked again about future agenda items, some of the issues that the council is wrestling with. As we went around, I would say probably 75% of people in attendance just were just there to listen. But we did talk about water supply. But we did talk about water supply. There's a gentleman in my neighborhood. His name is Dana Rowan. He's a retired professional geologist. He has been in contact with our underground water district. We talk every once in a while about the city's water supply. We talked about the project that was, again, recently completed on two ninety and some dollars programmed into the budget for development, potential development of future water supply, development of new well field and so forth. There was an issue that came up regarding trailers, more specifically RVs parked on the street. I know the council has recently received a few emails about trailers parked, RVs parked semi-permanently. Well, recreational, yes, right, and horse trailers, some construction trailers. This is something that we discussed probably five years ago with the council and no changes were made to the ordinance back then. Again, just pretty broad. We talked about some traffic issues, but it just looked like, it seems like the group, and there are a lot of people that return every time, they're just really looking forward to getting an update on what's going on in the city. Next Coffee with the City Manager is coming up, I believe it's the ninth of December. Under Water Department update, and I'll turn to Chris Canazy to provide a little bit more detail here. As you're aware, we recently completed a water pump project, including the line, water transmission line out two ninety east that includes a pump station in our, one of our main well fields, Canal Well Field, located about three miles out of town. That project also included three million gallons and three different tanks, elevated storage around town. We're really set up nicely completing that project. By the way, we started working on this back in about twenty fourteen, fifteen timeframe, so long-term project that we're just wrapping up construction, but we're set up to, again, start investigating a future well field, water supply, probably a little bit further out to ninety. So as we're looking at those options, we're doing that in the face of drought that continues. I think everyone's aware that the water district issued a ninety-day moratorium on Wilson County a little bit over ninety days ago. They have extended that another ninety days. Our rainfall to date, I want to say it's around nine inches. We might have had, might have just a little bit more than that right now with the recent rains, but our average is right around twenty-nine thirty, so we're very far behind. It takes a long time for those aquifers to recharge with that rain and capture a very small percentage. So we are in a situation currently with our well levels that we have not seen since 2011. Luckily, we're seeing this going into a time when the outdoor irrigation is not as intensive, but fully expect if we don't start getting a lot of rain for this to be one of our top topics going into the year. At this point, we're in stage three watering restrictions, which is once per week outdoor watering. There's a four-hour slot in the morning, four-hour slot in the evening, even water. We're working, go into stage four, the next restricted watering stage. That limits outdoor watering to once per week, only in the morning during that four-year period, so it roughly cuts that in half. At this point, again, I fully expect to have, to be having a very detailed and serious conversation, get our water supply update after the first of the year about moving into a stage four. We were very close to that earlier this year, but it's a situation that we continue to monitor. And again, it's a fairly dire situation at this point. Chris, would you like to talk just a little bit about the completion of the project and what that means in terms of reliability of our system?
Certainly. So as Clint mentioned, back in 2018, council supported the sale of some revenue bonds in the water department to support these major infrastructure projects. These infrastructure projects will last near the community for the next seventy-five hundred years plus, and these are long-term projects. We have been working on the construction for the last couple of years and happy to report that as of last Tuesday, we did a startup on the pump station. The importance of the pump station is, as Clint mentioned, that redundant feed transmission main into town. So we were reliant on basically two transmission mains previously, one from the Old Santory Road Well Field and then one from the Canal Well Field that pushed water through Gaming Lane into town. This redundant line coming out of Canal Well Field now goes down two ninety east and will be that redundant supply if something happens on Gaming Lane such that it won't cut our water supplies in half, bringing that water to town. Again, this pump station was set up for future development of a well field east of that current location, which is what Clint mentioned, will be sending out an RFQ to get somebody on board to do some groundwater modeling, some flow testing on some existing test wells, those sort of things, to possibly work with landowners in the future, securing whether it's the lease of the groundwater and/or the purchase of land sometime down the road. We look to develop, you know, a well field probably in the next ten to fifteen years, depending on growth, but just looking at securing or knowing where we need to secure that next water supply for the city of Fredericksburg, working with geologists and others as part of that effort. So it's exciting to see that project develop all the way from initial discussions as part of the master plan, getting in place based on the design, getting a contractor on board, seeing construction, now actually operating that pump station. To combine the transmission main, the pump station and that tank, probably about twelve million dollars worth of infrastructure. So again, infrastructure that'll be here for many years, the circle of people that be happy to answer the questions that you might have.
So that project provides, could provide treated water from three miles outside the city limits into town. So again, a lot of potential for expansion, development of Fredericksburg out that direction. One other item I'd like to mention under this report.
Yes, sir. Oh, Chris, is that new line on two ninety tested fully functional or we still have some? No, sir, we've been pushing the water to town since last Wednesday through that line.
Right. Thank you. One other, one other project I wanted to mention that we may be looking at from the operational side, because we're having a difficult time serving roughly fifteen hundred residents in the north part of town, Stone Ridge, just south of Stone Ridge, because of a limitation in line size from an elevated storage tank about five miles north of town. So we have a limitation in the pump station, cross mountain pump station, and then also the line size going out to that elevated storage that provides pressure and capacity back to town. In the middle of the summer, we're pushing very hard. We had a pump go down across the mountain a little bit earlier this year. So it's those types of operational issues that we'll be looking at also, along with increasing our capacity. When we, in the middle of the summer, are pushing very hard or pumps are running, sometimes forty-eight hours straight, our pressures are very high, so we concentrate on redundancy and making sure the system is in very good shape so we can deliver water. When we have a main break, it's very difficult to get the word out, people, and we can't wait on the weekly paper. It's very difficult to get that out if we have a major problem, as we're trying to avoid those types of situations. So we'll be discussing a number of additional projects with the council during budget next year. Again, you know, this is something at the top of the priority list on our side that we're able to deliver that water supply to all our customers, reliable water supply. And we have that future water in the ground for many, many years to come.
Good question. When we talked about going to water restrictions, level four, four, we talked about that enforcing under level three, that we hadn't had much enforcement. Now you hired another code enforcement officer, am I correct?
We're working on that currently, yes.
So there isn't one yet? So are we still having trouble getting people to comply with stage three before we move to stage four meeting?
Right, so we've been in stage three since 2013, and believe it or not, even with all of the information that we've sent out in the newspaper, social media, online, you name it, billstoppers, it's still difficult to get people to comply. We do have tools in place where we can see use, for instance, on the wrong day at the wrong time. We do curb some of those bad behaviors. A lot of people just don't know. I mean, believe it or not, a lot of people have their systems set and they don't know. A lot of people have a difficult, difficult time changing the schedule on their system, and we understand that. But there's some people that blatantly violate the ordinance, and those types of repeat offenders are the ones that are seeing the citations and violations.
It's like we'd all drive eighty miles an hour. There weren't some sort of code enforcement. I mean, code enforcement is key.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you.
And as we get into these heightened levels of watering restrictions, it'll become a lot more critical to enforce that. It really is a critical issue.
Can we get an update on our short-term rentals and our enforcement? Or I mean, as far as code, are we, are we getting through the lists that are in holding or been waiting? We were doing fifty a day, are we getting caught up or what? Daniel?
It's not on the agenda, but you can give a, you can give a staff report to answer that question, but we can't deliberate on it.
Okay, now my turn to Garrett to get an update on the permit side of things, but regarding code enforcement, we are now, through the end of the year, involving our police department as part of our code enforcement effort, specifically noise complaints. And with respect to short-term rentals, the non-response by the local contact person. So I'm getting a weekly report from both PD and code. This last weekend, for the last five days through Sunday, there was only one noise complaint through PD. That was for Super Eight. It was an unfounded complaint on the code enforcement side. It was also very quiet. I also did a ride around late Saturday night with an individual involved in the SDR business, and I can report that that was also very quiet. You could see some light trespass violations, potentially some parking issues, but it was cold outside, there weren't a lot of people out. But PD is assisting in that effort across the board. Again, that has to do with our inability to keep up with a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. Ms. Joseph just mentioned one very important one, and that is watering. We're trying to ensure that we're efficiently and effectively dealing with the code enforcement side of things. As we get into, again, a little bit more dire situation with watering, it's going to be important that everyone that sees that, for instance, on police force, whether it's day or night, be able to issue a violation or violating the city ordinance. So that's a work in progress, but they are currently engaged as of last Thursday. Again, I'm getting that weekly report that I'll pass along to Councilwoman.
Well, with the question I, one of the questions was how many permits are left or what do we do?
Do you want to address the permitting side here?
Well, and I may turn to Shelby. So bringing Jan on board will be a huge help. You know, it will take some, some time to train her up. I know finance is also interviewing for the hot collection specialist, which will be very beneficial. As far as the pending permits, we do have a number of issues. We're still continuing to work through with Granicus. We have another update call scheduled for today with them, but we are testing some improvements they have made to the system to try to help process the pending permits. As far as the backlog as a whole, I don't know. I'll turn to Shelby. Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
That's okay. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, counsel. So last numbers that I checked were Monday morning, and we were looking at five hundred and sixty or so pending STR applications. Again, that's a mix of renewals and new applications that are pending. Staff has slowed down on issuing those permits, given some of the situations we're working to correct on the Granicus side. This week, staff is working on reviewing the UAT that Granicus submitted for our renewal process. Hopefully, I will have that completed Thursday morning so that we can provide that feedback to Granicus and they can hopefully make those corrections.
Can you tell us what UAT is?
Sorry, that's the testing phase that we're in at the moment with Granicus, and they had submitted over four different portals that we're testing, the most important one being the renewal function. I'm not certain if you're aware or not, but at the moment, the renewal system through Granicus is not active. It's not working. So when applicants submit applications through Granicus, they're essentially generating new applications every time. They're not linking to their existing permit, which is a problem, and we needed that corrected. So Granicus is making that their priority, and they're working on correcting that pending our review.
So my understanding is we've got somebody coming in from Granus to work on this? Is that true or not?
Yes, sir. They have a full team that's working specifically with our product this week. So as soon as we complete our review of the information that they sent over, hopefully they'll be able to make those corrections quickly.
And we are working on a formal notice to send to Granicus with a number of these issues. We're working with Daniel, so we're anticipating that out soon.
We're also working on going live with the administrative education process by the end of this month.
Yes, so the first official hearings will occur, I believe, the first Friday in December. So there's going to be notices of violations sent out, probably, I'd say early next week will be the first ones that are officially sent, so we'll have that process up and running. And that, that process will really help out with watering violations. Like Councilmember Joseph mentioned, we'll need to enforce that closely.
Thank you all for your work on this. I would like to ask that this be part of our weekly updates, or at least for our council meetings, that we're getting updates on permitting and enforcement for the week.
All right, Sam.
I'm gonna just ask you about a little pet peeve. These big trucks coming back, coming through town with double wides and blocking both streets. I assume law enforcement can't control that or tell them to pull over. I mean, there, I saw two of them coming in yesterday morning. They take two lanes when they come in. Is law enforcement, and I mean, I know that's a state highway.
Unfortunately, those are permitted routes through the state. We've brought up some concerns and asked the state to try to route those through town in the off-hours, the off-peak hours. You know, the state said they tried to do that, but, but sometimes they just can't make it work.
And law enforcement can't pull them over and say lift some people past?
Well, if it's, if it's a permitted load, then that, that is part of their designated route to take, so it has to be a texted, maintained roadway for them to travel on. And a lot of times, Main Street, Fredericksburg, through the middle of town is part of that route. And our preference is always the major roadways like I-ten. A lot of times, that's, that's not possible for whatever reason. There were some physical impediments to travel on I-ten, some of these large loads in the past. That's been addressed as far as I know. So it just depends on where they're coming from or where they're going a lot of times.
All right, thank you, Clint. Item number ten is consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Studer, you've signed up to speak on this?
Yeah. Agenda item that I think should be in the near future is the risk of an event like we had in February that everyone remembers, kind of, but it's, it's more comprehensive than just addressing what the city may have done as a result of the lessons learned. And the way I would think of it is, let's address what the risk and impact was and, and could be realistically for the community, not just for the city infrastructure, but for the county, the school, and the way that may affect us by the surrounding counties. And as we know, the Texas grid is vulnerable, you know, and part of the what-if for us and our community is what happens in Texas or in the surrounding counties in terms of, say, trucking or, you know, supplies. counties in terms of, say, trucking or, you know, supplies and all that. So you come up with an assessment of what are the realistic risks to expect? And then you look at what our city and county and schools have put in place, what's still outstanding, maybe even some of the things we wanted to get, like maybe some generators or radios or whatever the things we think we, we wanted to have. Maybe they're not quite there if this event happens January first or, you know, pick a date. And I would say that the emphasis on what the individual folks in, within the city at least, should be emphasized to do, to be prepared for such an event, not only for themselves, but for their neighbors. There's a lot of people in, like in my neighborhood, that, you know, we know, we talked about getting together neighbors. So do you know who to call if, if you're, you know, physically impaired, some, you know, in your neighborhood to get help? Say, I fall on my frozen driveway. You know, who do I, who do I call? Do you have somebody? It's all, all having some margin for your, for your neighbors. And so there's the, there's the personal preparedness, there's the business preparedness. We gotta, Chamber of Commerce and, you know, are they, are they ready for an event? And, you know, a lot of people had to come in from out of town to stay in the, in hotels, you know. What, what's the assessment of, are we ready for that? The ATBs and the other. I, I just think it's, it, it needs to be brought up and discussed and advice given, you know, to the, the community about how they can help. There's only certain amount that you can do as a city or as a county or, or schools. But if given this is, where, this is where you should go if you run out of power and you need a CPAL, you know, or whatever. Are we going to the elementary school? Are we going to the, to the high school? Where are we gonna go? You know, just everything to help prepare the community for the event will help it go easier for the city on that. And that's, that's the suggestion.
Thank you. At some point, the council may consider putting an item just for presentation and discussion on the agenda regarding the city's emergency management plan. Get Justin and Lynn to talk through that, what all's involved, the training that every city employee goes through, volunteers, you know, locations. I, I don't disagree with Mr. Mr. Studer when we talked about the community and how that information flows out to them in terms of where they go for certain things. I think we could probably do a better job of getting that information out, but starting with an understanding of what we already have in place, just so the council understands how all that works and works together with county and other entities and so forth.
So we could add that to future agenda items on this list? Would you please? Anything else, council, on that? All right. All right, we now have another couple of executive session items that we need to deal with. As I mentioned before, let me get back to the. You want me to run through the future agenda items list right quick? I'm sorry, before we break, do you want me to run through the entire future agenda items list? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what we talked about. I said, asked you to add that to the item, to the list. Did you want to discuss the others?
Just, just mention them if I could run through, and if there's anything other than that the council would like to add to this. Again, this is a, a special meeting work session. Again, it tend to be more of an open discussion, although we have a couple of action items. We have events, mass event rentals and fees at Market Square. That's something we talked a little bit about during budget. That will probably be a very lengthy discussion, maybe one that I would propose moving to after the first of the year. Again, a lot of information to, to gather unless the council just wants to have a very high-level informational discussion regarding potentially charging a per-head fee for gated events at, at the square, council's preference.
I'm fine with that for the first of the year.
For, after the first of the year, okay.
That's fine. Can it come with a recommendation, that's not just a discussion?
Yes, and we, we've, we've been discussing that particular item in detail. There are a lot of options moving forward. How we're talking about, how they, they manage some of that. So that's a work in progress, but in order to have a, you know, a comprehensive look, look at that after the first of the year. We have two conditional use permits, one at 507 Cora or an SDR. I don't think it is for an SDR facility or SDR permit. We have another at 406 North Orange. Both of these were approved by ENZ. Additionally, new middle school, FISD middle school campus rezoning for the new, the construction of the new facility. We have sports park, could be specific to soccer fields, fees and other sports, sports facilities, just a high-level discussion about the fees that we're currently charging. I know Andrea has a proposal that she's working on to modify those fees just a little bit. And we've had a lot of communities around Fredericksburg. Affordable housing update from Vince Michel, as the market has changed locally, statewide, nationwide in the housing market, that affects everything in affordable housing. Vince gave an update to the EDC Board about a month ago. I thought was really good. I thought would be book of information for the council to hear and discuss with Vince moving forward with that effort. Historic Review Board vacancy, filling that vacancy. We have recently updated our purchasing policy. Daniel, was that done according to, or because of some changes in state laws or?
No, it was just updated.
But requires council approval for those specific changes?
Well, I don't know that it does, but it probably would, it probably should be approved by council. I mean, at this point, it's just a policy sitting in a book without any approval, so. You know, we, when, when I became city attorney, I'm gonna say like in two thousand, started in two thousand seventeen, I think it was in two thousand seventeen or eighteen. I was just given the task of reviewing and updating, and I worked with Finance to review and update that policy. But as far as I know, it's never been approved by council. So we can, we can review it again, and if it's appropriate, bring it back to council for actual adoption and approval.
Okay. So when I came on in thirteen, the city didn't have an official purchasing policy available to employees. We developed that over a, a number of years, and we've recently made some changes to that. And we, we've recently presented this to city staff. It would probably be a good idea just to have an open discussion with the council so you understand why we're taking certain purchases to the council for approval and why we don't for others, what those approval levels are, state law and so forth. So we'll bring that back for a short discussion. And then I've added emergency management plan presentation, again, just very high-level from Justin Calhoun, and we'll have our, our chief and, and others present that to the council and make you a little bit more familiar with that. That's all I have on the list, unless the council has anything to add or anything else to run.
And we have a, a additional request for public comment. Mr. Baldwin?
Good morning, Mayor and city council members. I just would like to propose that the city council and mayor and, and staff consider an in-depth review, perhaps when you do your review of the city charter, an in-depth review of policies for employees and council members in terms of disclosures, conflict of potential conflicts of interest, things of this sort. I'm Gary Baldrich. I'm at 222 West College Street here in Fredericksburg, homeowner since two thousand five. And with that, in terms of avoiding the conflicts of interest and all that can happen, would be a proactive plan for recruitment of volunteers to fill city boards and committees where the city does headhunting, in effect, to find people who are unbiased, so to speak, in a sense disinterested, where they don't have personal gain possibilities from their service on these boards and committees. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay. Now we're ready to go back to the. Two executive council issues. One is to consider and discuss for some exchange lease and value property located in the vicinity of the intersection of East Main and Liberty Hills Drive. And then the one that came in was added in sufficient notice with regard to consider, discuss and take possible action to initiate text amendments to section 2.100 of the city's zoning ordinance. Those will be executive session discussions.
I move we go from regular session to executive session?
Second.
Motion second to go from regular to executive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We'll make it as quickly as possible. All right, I'll accept the motion to go back.
So move to go back in regular session?
Second.
Motion second, go from executive to regular. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I know that some of you have stayed for this since the very end of the meeting. With regard to the first item that was on the agenda, we're not taking any action. Correct? Did I remember that correctly? The, the first, Daniel?
You're talking about executive session, item 11A. Well, that's, that's for the council to decide. Obviously, we discussed it.
Located in the vicinity of the intersection of East Main, et cetera. There's no action. Oh, there was. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm sorry. There is action to, to consider there.
Is this the approval of the subordination agreement? I make a motion, we, we approve the subordination agreement on the Texas Ranger side, subject to Daniel's changes on the counter. Second.
Motion second. Further discussion on that, segregation agreement? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, we're not gonna go to a screen here, but now we're at the, let's even discuss legal advice concerning applicable taxes and federal case law related to municipal regulation, short-term rentals. Daniel, would you mind reviewing that for us?
I think we're actually gonna, if council wants to discuss it, there's a, a item that was added on the addendum, it's item eight D, which is to consider and discuss and take possible action on initiating tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. And obviously, we just discussed this matter related to making an amendment to certain SDR types to address a recent court opinion that has an, has an adverse effect potentially on the city's existing SDR ordinance.
So this is a discussion of, of text alterations or language edits, whatever the term is, on the, on the existing ordinance with regard to the definitions of SDR, SDR B and B and SDR accessory?
Accessory and B and B, thank you, yeah. Specifically, the, the court ruled what? They, they ruled that, that we had, yeah, go ahead.
Certain, certain SDR types in our ordinance require the property to be the primary residence of the property owner, the principal residence of the property owner. And the district in New Orleans held that that, that approach is unconstitutional violation of the dormant commerce clause that discriminates against non-residents in their operation of an SDR. So we are trying to address that by expanding that definition in our existing ordinance to allow for other opportunities for, to not discriminate essentially against non-residents in attempts of SDRs.
So the ordinance was passed and turned out to be too narrow in the court's decision?
Correct. It's, I mean, it's, this is not a unique Fredericksburg provision, and the ordinance was passed prior to this court issuing its opinion. So this is, this is due to a change at, you know, important, after the ordinance was adopted. The, the process moving forward is if the, if the city council wants to initiate this text amendment, then a notice of public hearing will be published. There'll be a public hearing at planning and zoning. It will make a recommendation for the text amendments to council, then council will have another public hearing at your meeting, and then it'll consider the changing text of the zoning ordinance to address this issue.
So there's no text amendment proposed today. It is to start the process toward that end?
Correct. And this will actually be an expansion, not a contraction, but an expansion of the ability to operate those SDR types under the city's ordinance.
Thank you.
And probably a narrow, a narrow expansion, but an expansion.
Okay. Council, any questions or comments or further discussion? All right, I'll take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we initiate a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend the definitions of SDR accessory and SDR B and B and necessary related definitions to expand the lawful use and operation of those SDR types to situations beyond the requirement that the SDR be the property owner's principal residence.
Second.
The motion second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One more item of business?
Mayor, I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Appreciate your patience. Thank you, staff.